Good evening. It is Tuesday, April 11th at 6:30. We have a quorum and I'm calling this meeting to order. It's an exciting night and giving our pledges tonight are Ryan, Kenzie, and Olivia Stefanik. If they will come forward. There you go. Turn around. So you'll notice that they have a great last name and they are here because their mom is getting ready to do something really, really important. So these young ladies, you can imagine the fun things that they get drugged to and voluntold that they get to do and participate in and I'm sure their mom misses some of their events, but we are thrilled to have them and if you will please stand, they are going to lead us in our pledges this evening.
Let's give these young ladies a round of applause and Colin's going to take their picture.
If you will please remain standing, Deacon Paul Cook from the Ascension Catholic Church will lead us in our invocation tonight. Deacon Cook?
Good evening, Mayor Schroeder and council members. I'm Deacon Paul Cook from Ascension Church and I want to thank you for the privilege to give the invocation this evening. I also wish to thank you for all your hard work which makes Bastrop a wonderful place to live. May God bless you. And let us pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Almighty Father, we thank you for the gift of life, especially for Mayor Schroeder and all the council members. We thank you for the many people who work hard every day to make Bastrop a safe and supportive place for our families and those who work in or travel to our city. We especially thank you for all our first responders who devote their lives to keeping our community safe. We ask that all who attended the revival on our city last week grow in their love for you and their neighbor. We ask your blessing on this meeting. May everyone here have the courage to share those thoughts and seek to listen and understand the viewpoints of others. May you grant our council members your holy wisdom to make good decisions for the common good of all, most especially for the poor and those in need. And we ask this through your son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you very much, Deacon Cook. All right, council, we're going to jump over to, we're going to skip a couple of things and come back to them. We are going to go to 4H and I'm going to turn things over to our city manager.
As a city manager, one of the great privileges I have is appointing a police chief. Vicki has been the assistant police chief for some time and she stepped up during a period of time that was very crucial for the department. She has time and time again shown me her exemplary leadership skills and her commitment to the community. So it is with great honor that I recommend Vicki Stefanik be appointed as the City of Bastrop Police Chief. So we will have an official penning ceremony and Vicki is coming up and I believe her husband will be doing the honors.
Let's give her a round of applause while she's coming forward.
So one of the things Vicki said is she wanted to make her daughters proud.
Colin, yeah, get one with the kids. Chief, would you like to say anything?
I feel like I've got to speak to you guys and speak to you guys at the same time. I just really, really appreciate everybody coming out, especially all the members of the department. You guys are wonderful and I really, really do appreciate it. And I appreciate the city manager for recommending me for this position and obviously all of the city council. And more than anything, I hope my girls are proud of me. I love you guys very much and for my husband probably the most because he has to deal with a lot. So I really appreciate it and I'm very honored to be serving the city of Bastrop. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations to you, Stefanik. It is 6:37 and we're going to go into recess and have a short reception because we all like to eat cake with the police logo on it and you'll have an opportunity to congratulate our chief. It's 6:37 and we're in recess. All right, it is 6:51 and we are back in session and we're going to be on item 4A, which is the mayor's report. I'll give Colin a chance to get there. And we'll go ahead and jump into the pictures. It's been a really fun time since March 24th. The upper left hand, you'll see that the city manager and I participated in Little League's first day and we both got to throw out the pitch and all the little kids, it was a lot of fun. It was a real pretty day and they didn't get rained out. They were happy about that. Just below that, you'll see a picture from Best Warrior. That's the picture of them getting out of the swim and heading to their nine-mile hike with a 35-pound rustic. And just to the right of that, we have our own council member Cheryl Lee doing her first emceeing of Farm Street Opry, which she was sure that Kathy Danielson had given her more times to talk than anybody else had done, but Kathy assured her it was the same script. I was asked to go to the Founder's Classic. They have, Founder's Academy has purchased a piece of property and so that's a picture of me with their school director. And then Rotary, we were installing, Colin, I'm in the bottom left. I'm sure you've seen the brightly colored bike racks around Main Street. Those were put in place by, with help from the Rotary and I was a guest speaker at Rotary and that, there I am with their president, Andy, and you get a coffee cup when you go do that. The big picture with all the kids was Compass Rose and I was asked, and Chief Stefanik and I both went and spent some time with the kids for Women's History Month and they had tons and tons of questions and it was a lot of fun and enjoyed having an opportunity to visit with all the kids. And at the bottom of that are a few shots from the State of the City and the roast. These shots are from the roast. And I just wanted to extend a special thanks to all of the city staff that worked on that. Kathy Danielson and Ben and Steve, Colin and Cece and Rick and we were asking lots of questions from lots of people to get the facts for that speech and I just really appreciate it. It was a fun time. My family was very happy and I appreciate all the council that came and Mayor Protem Rogers spent an extra night in town so she could be there and appreciated everybody's attendance and I think everybody had a pretty good time. Colin, if we go to the upper right, I was asked to lead a walk and I did and we walked from the Recreation Center to Delgado Park and I knew I had picked the right park because most of the people walking with me said, "Where's Delgado Park?" So that was why we walked there and they were glad to know where it was. And then many of us participated on April 5th. It was National Walking Day and the very first walk that morning was at 7:30 led by our city manager and it started out with me, Terry, and the city manager. But we did end up picking up a person, but we were at 7:30, we were out at Bob Bryant and it was a fun day to walk. Then the last picture on the bottom right-hand corner, I had announced at the State of the City that I would be testifying on Monday and I did and there's a picture of me with Representative Gertis and I testified for House Bill 3324. That seems to be moving forward and that will allow us to get back the portion of the hotel occupancy tax that's sent to the state that will be sent back to us locally and the Qualified Hotel Project will be building the hotel to connect to the Convention Center and that can also include remodeling the kitchen to do a full commercial kitchen rather than just a warming kitchen. And I see one of our staff from Visit Bastrop saying, "Yeah," because that sure will help our ability to collect funds and be able to book some conferences when they have access to a hotel and a full kitchen. So it was a fun time between March 24th and today. And Colin, the next page has the things that I'll be doing between now and April 25th. I won't go over all of these, but a couple of things I wanted to point out. The next sit with Sylvia is going to be on Monday, the 17th. She's probably got that in her report, but council, I wanted to remind you that on April 17th, we will be having a joint meeting with the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation and also make sure that everyone knows that on Tuesday, the 18th, at the Bastrop Convention Center, the candidate forum at 5:30 is for council places two and three and at 7:30 is the candidate forum for the mayor. And then the other two things I wanted to point out was April 23rd is Table on Main. Those tickets are on sale and Monday, April 24th, is the first day of early voting. So that is what I had for the mayor's report. And council member Crouch, what would you like to share? Item 4B.
I got to do just a couple of things. I have been helping the city manager with the development group and also a Main Street ad hoc group. So we've had meetings with both of those groups to get information on how we can improve both of those things. And the other thing I've been doing is gathering in some information too for the Old Iron Bridge for rehab of that. And then the other thing I've been doing the most is training for the MS-150 that's coming through Bastrop. So I've got two and a half more weeks of that before I really have to suffer for two days and bike 150 miles. So I'm looking forward to that because it's coming right through the middle of Bastrop. So it'll be kind of neat to pass through town for a little while. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, council member Crouch. Council member Plunkett?
Yes, too, was at the ad hoc Main Street group, obviously, since I have a couple businesses down there. And really good feedback that we got from some of the business owners that showed up. Anybody else who's got a business downtown, I highly encourage you to attend. It's a lot of good dialogue and, you know, it's all about getting ready for Table on Main, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. So looking forward to that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, council member Plunkett. Council member Kirkland?
Thank you, Mayor. So I attended my boards and commission meetings for Cultural Arts and Parks Board, attended the Chamber Luncheon and Government Affairs Meeting, got to see councilperson Lee's debut in Farm Street Opry, State of the City event for the mayor roast, and then last, the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center fundraiser.
All right. Thank you, council member Kirkland. Council member Lee?
Good evening, Bastrop. So I've done a few things. I forgot to mention the Casa Boots in Bingo. That was my first time going and that was before our last council meeting and I forgot to mention it. I had so much fun. I love New Orleans and it just gave me that whole vibe. So glad I went out for that. The State of the City was great. I want to also congratulate the staff. I know they worked very hard tirelessly to put that together. I was so afraid for the mayor. I am not a fan of roast and it was bothering my spirit. But they did a good job and she enjoyed it. I attended my P&amp;Z meeting. I also led a walk on National, on Walking Day from Delgado to the Piney Creek Walk. If you guys have never walked the Piney Creek, I just knew there was a sidewalk there, but we literally, I kind of made them walk the whole thing, all the way around the subdivision. It's great. It's a great walk. It's clean. It was mowed. I didn't have to worry about looking for snakes. So if you want a nice walk, I would go check out the Piney Creek Homes down there. Farm Street Opry was a blast. I hope they enjoyed me. I enjoyed doing it. I had a lot of fun and looking forward to being, I hear there's a bunch of pictures floating around without my permission, so I'm going to have to check those out and make sure they're good. Lots of stuff going on at the library. National Library Week is coming up, April 23rd. There's going to be an annual book sale coming up. There's a conference that some of the staff will be going to. There's Spring Fest that they're going to be participating in, bringing awareness to National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And then even going into May, there's a reading program. So please go out to the library, take advantage of the programming and they need volunteers, I think I'm going to say that at every council meeting. They need volunteers to keep all of this stuff going, so please, if you are available and want to get involved in the community, please volunteer. The last thing I want to mention is the, on February 28th, the city council, during our city council meeting, a resolution was passed to recommend a request that Congress honor the distinguished faithful and selfless military career of Billy Waugh by designating the post office here in his hometown of Bastrop as Sergeant Major Billy D. Waugh Post Office. SG M. Waugh passed away on April 4th at the age of 93 and his family shared with me that he will be cremated. His ashes will be spread in Fort Dill, which is in Tampa Bay, Fort Bragg in North Carolina, and in Bastrop at Fairview Cemetery in the Waugh Plot. At this time, the family advised me they're waiting for Congress to act on renaming the post office in an effort led by Congressman McCall, who reports he is very confident that the goal will be achieved and it will be approved. So I'm sure myself and my fellow council members will join me in sending heartfelt condolences to the Sanders family and all those who knew and served with him that are mourning his loss. And with your permission, Mayor, can we have a moment of silence?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member Lee. We'll look forward. I know we will all anticipate the renaming of that post office. It's very well done, very well deserved. I did want to point out Mayor Protem Rogers was not able to be with us this evening and she texted me right before the meeting and said, "It's just killing me. It's the first meeting she's missed in five years." So she's, and I was like, "I know what that feels like." So she said she'd be watching and that was for y'all. She'll be watching y'all, keeping an eye on you. Okay, we're on the top of page two, item 4C, city manager's report. City manager?
So we, you have had a full couple of weeks and the staff has had a full couple of weeks. As you mentioned, Monday is the April Sit with Sil, 7:30 at the Bastrop Public Library. Again, encourage anybody who wants to come in and have any discussion about any item. There is nothing that's off topic and we will delve right in. May or may not turn into an agenda item.
I think it's 7:15. That's what that says.
I'll be there at 7:15.
I just don't want you or them to be late.
I will be there at 7:15. We'll get it. We'll get it at some point. The next one is the Budget Workshop and the Public Comment. So we have started the budget process early this year in order to give the public an opportunity to comment on what we're spending our money on. The first Budget Workshop for the council is April 19th at 3 o'clock. We are going to be talking fiscal forecast assumptions based on some preliminary information we've already gotten from the Appraisal District. We're going to be talking comprehensive plan. We're going to be talking some capital plan review and I believe we're going to give you a standing of where we sit right now with the draft budget and moving forward. We have launched Balancing Act. After you see it on the 19th, we will launch it to the public. It is the general fund portion of the budget and that's the one that is impacted by the tax rate and the debt rate. So the public will have an opportunity to have an input into revenues and expenses. There are some additional requests by some of the departments and the public will have an opportunity to vote yea or nay or to put some other comments as to something else they may want to see an expenditure on. The last amendment that we are doing is for our community assets, line iteming out those items and putting the base budget and see what the community would like to fund them and in what amount. So that'll launch again after the April 19th meeting. We do have a joint BEDC and city council meeting coming up also on Monday. It's going to be a long day for me. It's at 5:30. It will, we may have to move that time to 6 o'clock because the EDC will convene at 5 and they have a couple of items on their agenda that need to be dealt with in executive session for potential economic development projects. And then we will start the council meeting right after. We are going to be talking about the existing policy as it exists and some minor amendments that we can make to that policy, including metrics. We're going to be talking about all of the joint projects and we're going to be talking about responsibility matrix. Who's responsible for what and how does that handoff happen seamlessly so that we can sort of stop tripping on each other. So you're going to have a full week, too. We did have the downtown ad hoc business owners meeting. This was held on March 31st. As discussed, there was a lot of issues on the table and after we heard, you know, you've got to let people express themselves and the feelings are heard and then we delve through what are some of the nuggets that we can work through in that. One of them is signage. There are some examples of some signage they want to see directing folks into the downtown, something that looks similar to that so that our downtown businesses that are tucked away in little nooks and crannies don't get forgotten. The city permitting policy as it relates to getting a CVO or as it relates to getting a sign, the length of time that that takes for a business to be able to get off the ground. So we're going to work through those internal processes. And then of a very hot topic of discussion was the role of the Main Street program versus the role of perhaps a downtown business owners association or something similar like the DBA that was created before. There's a feeling Main Street is focusing on beautification and the business want to focus on advocacy and how do we change the sign code or how do we change the CVO process and how do we change those things that affect the day-to-day operations? So we did have a member of the, the chair of the Main Street Board actually attend. So we're hopeful that we can bring the groups together and if that means different roles for people, different volunteer roles or different volunteer opportunities, then we will work through that collaboratively. And then the other is all of the activities that used to happen downtown that don't happen anymore for a lack of resources and that's whether it's a city resource or whether it is volunteers who no longer volunteer for one reason or another. They've moved, they've moved on, they've passed on, et cetera. So how do we bring that and bring that rally cry back to bring some of those events back? And again, through a series of collaboration. We cannot do it in isolation. No one group can do it in isolation. So how do we work together so that, again, we're not tripping over each other and we're sharing the resource and not taking any more resource from one than the other? So the Old Iron Bridge. So we have made it to round two of a Texas Alternative Transportation Grant. We still have $3 million in reserve. That is a match for what is potentially a $15 million grant. 12 from the state, three that is our match. There are alternative grant programs at the federal level that we may be looking at depending on how we can stack those or if we can piggyback those on one another. We do have to address maintenance and that's tree trimming and perhaps some intermediate repairs and what does that look like in costing that out? I have been asked about what would a potential borrow look like if we just bit the bullet and borrowed the money to replace the bridge or repair the bridge and make any necessary to make it a pedestrian bridge again? And we estimated $20 million because the engineering study with inflation, we estimated $20 million. And that's a $1.9 annual payment over 15 years. We could spread that all the way to 30 years, but obviously the longer you spread it, the more interest that you pay. And that's about a $10 a month tax increase to the residents. But that falls on the debt side away from the ceiling of total tax increase. Obviously, if that's something that we want to pursue, we need to be thinking about that. This does not require it go before the voters for a vote. This can be a certificate of obligation. Sometimes we call it a tax note that can be made at the council level. So that is going to be worth a lot of public conversation as we head into the budget to make determinations of what does the tax rate actually look like and are we able to maintain a steady rate and perhaps eat away with new valuations and new increases in all of the property that we have in the city.
So I know that we made it through, I'm so glad that we made it through round two and I know this is our second time to go and we didn't make it to round two before. Based on history, and I don't know if you know or if, maybe, do we have a feel for when we'll, when we'll have an answer of if we made it or not?
I believe we said the September timeframe.
September, okay. Thank you.
September, October. Trace is telling me October. Which if we were to call a vote for a bond, right, that's November. So we'd have to call that vote in early summer. So this, again, this does qualify for a non-voter required bond. It can be a tax issuance. But this is something we need to sort of put on the parking lot and as we look at the debt and we look at the tax rate and we look at what the budget is, then there's perhaps a variety of sources it can come from. Any other questions before I move on?
Thank you.
Okay. So Iredelle District. This is a pretty hot topic. So we have given some information to HLC and Planning Commission from a very, just a mention in a city manager's report or a staff report. So I'll give you a short history. The Iredelle District was created in response to House Bill 2439, which essentially limited local control of building materials. It was ostensibly passed to drive down construction costs. The masonry lobby is a strong one, as is the plumbing lobby. You may not know that. And there were a lot of municipalities who had requirements for four sides brick, flat roofs on the commercial side, et cetera, et cetera. This was in response to some of that what the legislature called government overreach. And so it became effective on 9/1/2019. Any changes to your local ordinance via the exceptions that are listed over on the right needed to have been made by April 1st of 2019. Our district was not made prior to 4/1/2019. There were some exceptions on how you can get through that and one of that was to become a certified local government. The city staff, we started down that path and then we abandoned that path. We did not complete the path to become a certified local government. We are pursuing that path now because what it essentially takes is we have most of the pieces in place. It takes some strengthening of our Historic Landmark Commission ordinance. It takes, for example, moratoriums on the amount of time that it takes when you apply for a demolition permit and it takes some review. So there's some strengthening of that ordinance that needs to happen, but we could potentially qualify. The Iredelle District, just so some of you know, was, George Iredelle was an engineer surveyor who was doing some corrections to the lot and block portion in May of 1920. The portion of this map, a portion of this map, was used as the boundary for the Iredelle District and I'll go over that boundary. So part of, for me as a manager and an administrator, one of the things, and not just as administrator, but as a planner, when you have to raise your right hand in court, you will always go to the preamble in the planning document. And Bastrop's planning document says, "We will adopt standards and processes that result in fiscally sustainable development and promote incremental development with intentional character by focusing on the intersection of the public and private realms." So there's the why for the Iredelle District. What we had to cross is the hoops over to the right-hand side of H-Bill, House Bill 2439. We tripped over ourselves in crossing through those hoops, so we didn't cross over those hoops appropriately. So right now, there is a moratorium in place that prevents us from asking for a certificate of appropriateness and also prevents us from enforcing those things related to the Iredelle District. The Iredelle District map, as it was created, is over on the right-hand side. So what is our path forward? So there is a public dialogue that we will be having. We need to bring this back to the Historic Landmark Commission because as I said, that ordinance needs to be strengthened. They will not meet in April, so we will meet with them in the month of May. Planning and zoning will hear this Iredelle District discussion. Um, Planning and Zoning will hear this Iredelle District discussion in their April meeting and, um, any path forward for any future conversations. Now I put an "and" there with question marks because if there are additional public hearings that any commission or the council or any board requires or would like to see happen as part of this dialogue, that is the "and." We will certainly put that on the calendar. So from a public dialogue perspective, um, I asked the Planning Commission the other night to define what authentic Bastrop is because that's what we need to consider. The B3 did take DNA from Bastrop, but in my opinion, it missed some very important segments of the town in that DNA. The segments that we missed are part of the non-conforming dialogue that you'll have later on, uh, in the agenda. We have to talk about what is fiscally sustainable and what is affordable. We, we have to talk about that. Um, we, we say that we want to create affordable housing and we do that with not having lot sizes or minimum lot sizes. How does that translate into what we're actually putting into place? Does the district, um, does the district impact that? I think it's less impactful if there is, um, some recommendations as opposed to some requirements, which is what the legislature was trying to avoid to begin with. Once we start defining exactly what we want things to be built of is when we begin to get ourselves in trouble and begin to skirt some of those things and really throw out affordability out the window. And what are the true impacts to the town? What is the new proposed boundary if we're going to pursue a, um, a, similar to Iredelle District, whatever we would like to call it? Um, I've had two development group meetings, uh, two members, three members actually. Carrie's in the audience, who have drawn a, a new proposed boundary, which is a smaller footprint of the Iredelle District. What would that look like and what are the impacts to that? And then is there any amendments to the requirements that we want to talk about in the pattern book or the proposal? Is there anything that is worth having a dialogue about? And then what else in the B3 applies as it relates to the Iredelle District? So we are by no means done having the conversation. It does warrant a public dialogue, but, um, I think as I've stated before is, I know I've, I've watched a lot of the council meetings, I've watched a lot of the dialogue in my research coming here. I think there was a, um, a sincere miscommunication about the impact of this to the residents. I, I will be perfectly honest with you. I don't know that we all understood the impact and now that we're in it, right? Now we're feeling it and now it's sort of time to go, okay, let's take a collective breath. We know we want to be Bastrop, but what is that defined as? If we defined it as neighbor's kitchen in that area, um, you can't do that under the Iredelle District anyway. So we have neighbors as on our postcards and we say this is authentic Bastrop, but you can't do it under the, um, Iredelle District boundary anyway. So what does that really feel like? And is it the Iredelle District we need to be worried about or is it strengthening our building codes on the other side? So sustainability, affordability and applicability and its impacts, those are the, the really big things we need to have a public dialogue about. Questions on that?
Counsel, any questions? All right. Good stuff. All right. Thank you very much and I know, I appreciate you laying out the path forward because I know there's been a lot of conversation about it and I'm glad everybody's gonna have an opportunity to, um, share their thoughts on that. So at this time, I'm gonna go down front because we've got quite a few proclamations. Yes, Bonnie, I'm looking at you. Why aren't you walking this way? So item 4D is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas recognizing April 23rd through the 29th of 2023 as National Library Week. Everyone knows our librarian, Bonnie Pearson. She's awesome and I appreciate everything you've done for us. Today's libraries are more about what they can do with and for their communities and not just about what they have on their shelves. I don't think anybody ever imagined libraries having hotspots that you could check out, but we have those. And cake pans, did you know that? You can get cake pans for, you know, those things that you like. I'd really like to make one of those or some people would like to make one of those, but they don't want to buy the pan? You can go check the pan out. Libraries have long served as trusted institutions, often the heart of their city, town, school and academic campuses. Libraries are a resource for all. We recognize librarians as information professionals who provide expertise, services and guidance for patrons to access credible sources and material, making their own informed decisions about the world today. Librarians thoughtfully develop collections and programs that are wide-ranging and explore the diversity of our changing society. Literacy is power. Initiatives highlight how libraries and staffs encourage literacy in basic information, civic and social health and financial, which contributes to greater personal and community success. America is celebrating National Library Week, including April 25th as National Library Workers' Day and the immeasurable contributions made by library workers. April 26th as National Library Outreach Day, showing library services are not limited to their physical location. And April 27th as Take Action for Libraries Days, encouraging community support for libraries. Now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim April 23rd through the 29th as National Library Week. Counsel member Leah, why don't you come join us since you're the liaison? Let's give Bonnie and her staff a round of applause. So I said, Bonnie, you want to say anything? She said, uh, no. All right. Item 4E, come on Curtis, you love it every year. Did you bring any of the guys with you? Proclamation for, item 4E, proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas recognizing April 18th, 2023 as National Lineman Appreciation Day. It is Curtis's favorite day of the year. The only thing he likes better than National Lineman Day is having to stand here in front of all of y'all at the council meeting. Right? All right. It's short and sweet Curtis, it'll be, it'll be painless, it'll be over soon. This holiday can be traced back to April 10th, 2013. This is when the United States Senate Resolution 95 established the 18th of April as National Lineman Appreciation. This day was established then because the year before, a hurricane had disrupted the power in 24 U.S. states, toppling power lines and caused over $65 billion in damage. After the national disaster, natural disaster, linesmen from all over the country worked hand in hand to restore power in the U.S. The line worker profession began in the 1840s to work on telegraph lines. The United States has over 9 million miles of wire and 170 million wooden poles. National Lineman Day is a time to express our utmost appreciation to the great men and women that work on a daily basis in ensuring reliable electricity, a role that is performed almost invisibly. City Council encourages all residents to recognize the vital role our linemen play in providing safe, reliable, affordable electricity by expressing your thanks on social media using hashtag #ThankALineman. Now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize April 18th, 2023 as National Lineman Appreciation Day. Let's give him a round of applause. Curtis, your work is greatly, greatly appreciated and we know through Storm Uri and several events that we've been through, got other mayors that are pulling their hair out and I'm like, Curtis has us and you and your guys do a great job and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
You can go. Okay, the next proclamation is for Air Quality Awareness Week, which is gonna be May 1st through the 5th, so we're, we're a tiny bit early on this one, but, um, and it's one of those things where you're like, clean air, whatever, and that's Austin and not our problem. Man, does it impact so many things. And if they fall out of compliance, it starts impacting us. So, um, it is something that if you have asthma or you have family with asthma, you're well aware of the difference of air quality. Um, Councilmember Kirkland and I, and I think several council members have spent some time out of the country. I, I spent a decade in Beijing one evening and felt like every time I took a breath, I was losing years of my life. It is, uh, clean air is something that you certainly don't appreciate till you have an opportunity to be in a place where you can't see a block down the street. So, um, air quality can threaten our environment, economy and the health of the residents of the City of Bastrop. Children, older adults, people with lung disease and people with heart disease, which make up about half of all residents in cit- in central Texas are particularly affected by poor air quality. Compliance with N A A Q S is important, not only for public health, but also for the region's economy and ability to conduct transportation planning. The City of Bastrop supports the effort of the Central Texas Clean Air Coalition and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to promote air quality. The EPA has designated May 1st through the 5th as National Air Quality Awareness. Now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 1st through the 5th as Air Quality Awareness Week. Yay. All right. Our last proclamation is about butterflies. Item 4G, proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas recognizing monarch butterflies. I'd like Terry and Carrie to come stand with me. They have this face of, what are you talking about? It's because it's all about bar, uh, about our parks. Um, I also, Ashton, you need to come up too and our nat-, our gardeners, all of them need to come forward. Who doesn't like a butterfly? You've been fascinated by butterflies since you were a little kid. The whole idea of the cocoon and it turns into a butterfly. Did you know that monarch butterflies are a huge tourist attraction? And they are bright orange and poisonous. Did you know they were poisonous? Councilmember Plunkett knew they were poisonous. They're, they, they eat milkweed and milkweed's poisonous, but they've built up a tolerance to it. They weigh less than a paperclip and they can fly, how high can they fly? Any guesses up here, counsel? They don't want to guess. 10,000 feet. That's, that's kind of impressive. They use their eyes to find the flowers, but they use their feet to taste and find the nectar. So just a few things you might or might not have known about monarch butterflies. Whereas during the spring, monarch butterflies can travel over 2,500 miles from their overwintering sites in Mexico to summer breeding grounds from northern United States into southern Canada. In late summer, monarchs born up north return to Mexico to the same mountainous region and same trees where their ancestors congregated the winter before. Central Texas is part of the funnel that the monarchs pass through during both trips. In the spring, monarchs from Mexico look for milkweed to lay eggs on, cretin the next, creating, there's a G missing, creating the next generation that will travel north. In the fall, monarchs look for flower nectar to refuel on their way to Mexico. Due to the use of herbicides, pesticides, habitual conversion, habitat conversion, oh my God, my contacts are not doing good tonight. Habitat conversion and adverse land management, monarch populations have declined about 80% in recent decades. The City of Bastrop is within this funnel, perfectly located to assist this annual monarch migration and help reverse this trend. Therefore, be it resolved that through the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge, U.S. cities, municipalities and other communities are committing to create habitat for the monarch butterfly and pollinators and to educate residents about how they can make a difference at home and in their community. Now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, pledge to join the National Wildlife Foundation Mayor's Monarch Pledge, striving to make Bastrop a destination for monarchs and other pollinators. One of the really cool things that they do is they're a part of the whole lifespan and they, um, they can help us use less water, they help us have a better quality of life, they help us with gardens, with pollinating and help us have flowers that continue year after year. They help make seeds and, um, I'm looking at my Visit Bastrop friend. They bring lots of tourists when you have them and it makes it a better place to enjoy our life and enjoy our parks. If you'll please give these, this group of folks a round of applause. All right. You bet. And, um, I just want to say that one of the reasons that I did that monarch pledge was because Howard Nimroff wrote me an email and said, hey, we ought to do this. And I sent that to Terry and she said, I just walked out of a TRAPS, uh, session on how important monarch butterflies are. So there you are and, and that's how you end up with a proclamation and we're glad to be supportive of that. All right. We, um, don't have any work sessions or staff or board reports, so we'll be moving to citizen I have two people signed up for citizen comments. The first is Ashton Fuentez. Ashton, if you'll state your name and address, you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Ashton La Fuente and I'm the, uh, Director of Marketing for Visit Bastrop. And I'm just here tonight to share with you guys some exciting and fun things that we have going on. Um, Visit Bastrop is pleased to announce that we recently launched, launched our GEM program. Um, GEM stands for Going the Extra Mile. Um, this program gives you, our residents and our community and our visitors, the opportunity to recognize employees in our hospitality community for providing exemplary service and dedicated performance to their roles in hospitality. We all know excellent customer service is delivered by every hospitality, delivered by every hospitality business is integral to the continued growth of tourism in Bastrop. One of the most critical components of the visitor experience is the quality of the interface between the visitor and the service provider. This program recognizes the hard work and the dedication of the employees in our very own hospitality community. Speaking of gems, I want to give a quick shout out to Mayor Schrader for partnering with Visit Bastrop on our recent sales calls that represented a large economic impact to Bastrop. Thank you for being a gem in our eyes and always being willing to go the extra mile. We appreciate your partnership. We encourage everyone present tonight and watching online to please visit our website, visitbastrop.com to nominate a gem today. Our winners will be announced on Monday, May 8th at our birthday celebration. Um, yes, it's our fifth birthday. Visit Bastrop is turning five this year. We've officially been inviting people to Visit Bastrop and hang out with us for the past five years. Um, we're proud of the work that we've accomplished in that time and we want to celebrate with everybody. So be on the lookout this week for an official invitation, um, to our birthday party on May 8th. Um, we'll, we will have it in conjunction with National Travel and Tourism Week. There will be birthday cake, live music and lots of prizes and giveaways and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The next person we have signed up to speak is Roger Henderson. If you'll please state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Roger Henderson, 706 MLK Ra. Here to talk about malicious prosecution and obstruction of justice, which can now be proven against the City of Bastrop. Malicious prosecution occurs when the city police department files charges to cover up for the police misconduct. Obstruction of justice occurs when the city attorneys lie to the federal judiciary to get an erroneous ruling, as they have done in this case. I'm gonna give you some data, so I hope you have some pens so you can ask Mr. Barquere some questions to this effect. The city officers were sued November, on, uh, March 24th, 2020. The federal judge served these officers on, it was returned to his office on January 8th, 2021. Four months later, the city police department, for the same charges that the police officers charged in federal court, delivered the case to the DA's office on April 27th, 2021, three months later after the police officers were charged. On October the 8th, the city poli-, the city lawyers delivered a false statement to the federal judge to get the federal judge to abate the lawsuit until further notice that can now be proven. Now the city is now held accountable for the erroneous advice that their, that their lawyer has given them. And so I will be amending my complaint to include the city now because their lawyers now can be proven to have given false evidence to the district attorney's office, false statements and false evidence to the federal judge. So I will be amending my complaint to include the city for $100 million.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Colin, we're gonna be jumping around. I'm trying to help somebody out. We are going to be moving on to item 9H. 9H, consider action to approve resolution R 2023-61 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract for the update of the 2016 Master Transportation Plan to Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $175,000, hereby attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, um, and thanks for, I'm sure Ryan Graves here from Kimley Horn, appreciate you moving him up on the list. Um, essentially, um, this is our five-year update to our master transportation plan that was done in 2016, um, in conjunction with our 2036 Comprehensive Plan, which also was adopted in 2016. You're familiar with that, Mayor? As our steering committee chair. Um, and what we'll do here is really, once it's awa- if awarded tonight, um, you will see us come back and talk about the Comprehensive Plan update on the 25th, uh, and then we'll kind of put these two consultants together and make sure we're understanding what our transportation needs will be for the future, along with, uh, our land use, um, changes that may be made to Comprehensive Plan, um, and updates to the future land use map, things of that nature. But this is really just a planning document that's good to review every five years and be updated. With that, I'll take any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Joe? Councilmember Crouch?
I, I was looking through the documents, I didn't really see a completion date for the plan. Is, is there a date tied to it? I saw something that said 10 months, but it didn't really have a date associated with it.
Yeah, and the, the expected, the expe- and again, I don't have a completion date either. I do believe it's 10 months from the time we, uh, actually executed a notice to proceed, which should be within the next 30 days, I would think, so 11 months from now. Give or take?
Okay.
Does that sound right? Yes.
Do you have another question?
I, I do. I'm sorry, I'm just, I was kind of scrolling through my notes here. There's 5.2 talked about a pedestrian and bicycle network, and there was a recommendation in there to, uh, evaluate that, but maybe not put the, uh, bike paths or sidewalks in. And I just want to bring up that, um, I hope when we get the transportation plan back, if there's a recommendation to put a sidewalk or a bike path in, that we, that we do that at the time, uh, that, that we build the streets and build the infrastructure for it. So we don't end up with, uh, like, the old part of Pecan Street or Main Street where you have sidewalks down one half of the road, and then you skip over to the other half of the road, then you end up with sidewalks down there. And I'm sure at some point that was done as a budget item, but it, it just makes sense to do it all at one time and get it over with. And so I hope we look at that, and I hope the recommendation comes up like that.
And I, and I think it will, um, because they're really gonna review the cross-sections as well, and, and the classification of the streets. So for example, if it's determined that Pecan, um, Street is a, is a pretty major thoroughfare or collector, which it is, um, I could see where recommendations would come into play for, um, along with our, we had this exact same conversation in a Trails meeting on Monday with the Parks Master Plan. Um, and the goal is kind of to sync up all those modes of transportation, that include the Trails, that include sidewalks, that include, um, you know, the Streets, that you're gonna, we're gonna pay most attention to here, but multiple modes of transportation and kind of weave all those together with our land use plan, which is why you see these three all coming before you this year. So yes, we're gonna look at that.
Okay. Good deal.
To answer your question.
There was also, uh, it talked about traffic signals and syncing up, uh, the traffic I'm assuming it would include, uh, Chestnut and Main Street or everything along Chestnut, or is that something that Tech dot would have, the state would have to?
We, we would look at all of, all of the traffic, all of, currently, all of the signals belong to Tech dot. Um, the city takes those over when you reach about 50,000 in population. Um, but what we'll do here is assess multiple intersections. I think there's 20 in here. Um, we'll also assess, um, intersections, timing, uh, coordination, and, and kind of develop some capital projects for that, because there is a cost associated with timing multiple and correct, feel free to jump in if I'm incorrect here, but there are, um, there, there is a cost to synchronize in all of these different signals. So that's kind of what we'll work on, and they'll make recommendations.
Because that definitely would help move traffic
Yes.
through, through and, and out of here, or into here, I guess, however you wanna, however you want to look at it. Um, there was one more.
Mr. Joe, if, while he's looking for his last comment, um, one of the other reasons that it's important to update the master transportation plan is because there are different organizations that'll help with grants, particularly the bicycle and pedestrian, that there's folks that are interested in encouraging that. And so whether we're going after state money or federal money or grants for certain things, one of the first things they want is, is it, have you studied it? Is it in a master transportation plan? Is it coordinated with your MPO, that type of thing? If you, that's what I'm, have always believed. I don't think that has changed.
No, that's absolutely correct. And then it'll, and this will actually trigger, uh, the consultants looking at Campos' recent plans, making sure we're in compliance with the county's transportation plan, just to make sure regionally, um, we're all saying the same thing when a right-of-way section needs to be done, or something of that nature. So if a road's gonna be four lanes and we know that we're gonna grow, now we're gonna change it to six, we need to make sure we pay attention to that kind of thing as we develop. So, they'll all court, help coordinate all of that.
The, the last thing that I had, Trey, was, um, there's several places in the document that, uh, talked about the B, the B-3 code and then the plan being based on the stuff that's in the B-3 code now. And I know that there's, uh, we've, we've had some conversations with the development group and just internally, uh, about, um, maybe not having quite as many, uh, streets. The grid of the streets is a little bit bigger, and so I know that they're basing, uh, their information on the current code that we have now, but, and, and it also stated in here that as the code changes, that the plan will change, I hope, in, in 10 months, maybe we'll have all that stuff worked out. But, um, just take that into consideration, please, that I know that, uh, we have a 330-foot grid and a code now, and it could expand to maybe 770 feet or maybe bigger. So we don't end up with too many streets that we can't afford to maintain and, and pay.
Yeah, and I, and I think one of the great things about this is they'll look at the overall transportation network as one system. Um, and that's kind of what we've been, you'll, you'll see us coming back, we're talking about transportation impact fees, before long, uh, other things like that that are currently going on. And this'll just be one more thing that helps marry all that together. Anything else?
Well, he came and he's sitting, do you want to say anything?
Sorry. Yeah, my name is, uh, Ryan Graves, I'm with Kimley Horn and Associates. I'm a transportation planner. I just wanted to thank you guys for, uh, taking this into consideration, and I'm excited to work on your transportation network and look at all the things as a comprehensive plan and, uh, work with Trey here, so really appreciate it.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Crouch, I, I think you were done, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Council?
Move to approve resolution 2023-61.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. Council, you have before you resolution 2023-61. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Council, we're gonna go back to citizen comments. I got a text that Ms. Fossler signed up for citizen comments, but I don't have a record of it, but she is here, and come on up and if you'll fill out paperwork for Ann, so we'll have a record of it. If you'll state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Carrie Fossler, I live at 1903 Main Street. I'm here as a citizen, not representing any of the lots of boards I'm on. The season is upon us for revisiting and, uh, reflecting upon our codes that we've been using for the last four years. And, uh, my request is that, um, if anything significant, there's, there are some amendments on the tonight, this is not anything about the agenda, but beyond the low-hanging, like, awesome fruit that's on the agenda tonight, for significant amendments and changes, um, I'm hoping as a citizen that we are, um, very considered and invited and participate to, um, and, and all the input, uh, for the new proposals, for the amendments that are, um, gonna be put before us. I revisited what it was like to be here as a citizen in 2018 and 2019. I'd only been here a few years, and it was, it was such a cool time to be here, and it felt, I felt very considered as a citizen, and I looked back on all the public engagement things we did during that moratorium. I'll name a few, because I did 11 of 12 of them, and I was just a citizen, but I did the community walking tour, uh, the bike tour, the developers forum, the two-day design rodeos, the two-day code rodeos, the transportation and drainage rodeos, the final code updates, the pop-up, the Main Street pop-up, that was really cool, uh, several open houses, some input meetings. And then I went back to my email too, and there was like a special, there was a special email address set up, and they kept me abreast of everything as a citizen. It was like, next steps, draft land use regulations now available for review, now available for public comment, draft code now available for public comment, now available for review. And I loved this. I loved being a citizen, just rolling into town on my bike and being able to have so much input and being so considered. And so I just wanted to, um, for those that didn't participate or weren't here or weren't in service at the time, remind you of, um, just, we don't have to do it in that way, but to engage the citizenry and, and the big changes that will, that are proposed to affect them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fossler. All right, Council, we are going to, um, staff, do we have any other people, any other, um, visitors that are dying to go home? Okay. All right. Consent agenda is, does anybody want anything pulled off of the consent agenda? And I will bring to your attention that item 8D, you have, um, a revised ordinance, and it added the words "have been completed" for Bastrop County, Texas, and incorporated areas. Um, and, uh, the city secretary has highlighted that for you in yellow, so you can see what the difference is. Does anybody want anything pulled off of the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the March 28th, 2023 regular meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-05 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget of, for the fiscal year 2023 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-06 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the zoning change for 1.998 acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey, abstract 98, Bastrop County, Texas, from P2 rural to PS core, providing for findings of fact, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for enforcement, providing for proper notice, and meeting and establishing an effective date. Item 8D, consider action to approve first reading of ordinance 2023-09 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the city of Bastrop, Texas Code of Ordinances, Chapter 3, Building Regulations, Article 3.17, Flood Damage Prevention, repealing conflicting provisions, providing for severability, proper notice and meeting, establishing for an effective date, and move to include on the April 25th, 2023 consent agenda for second reading. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Council.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Council, we're moving on to items for individual consideration. Item 9A, at the bottom of page three of your agenda, consider action to approve resolution number 2023-62 of the city of, council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, allowing the mayor to sign a letter of support for the city of Austin for the Climate Pollution Action Grant, Planning Grant. The city of Bastrop intends to participate in those activities and the development of those deliverables led by the city of Austin. City Manager, do you want to make some comments on this?
Sure. This is not committing the city to any financial dollars or anything in the future. Um, the city of Austin is submitting the grant, the city of Austin will manage the grant. Um, it always helps when there's inter-local participation or regional participation for the grant. Um, 1 million is the starting, and it's available to specific local governments. Uh, the grants get even larger, so this is an entry-level grant, and, um, we're in support of clean air.
Council, any questions?
I just have one. Why are we not applying for this grant? Is it not available to?
It's available to municipalities.
Is it just something we didn't consider?
We were not aware.
Or we, we weren't aware?
We were not aware. And the, the deadline is coming up pretty quick.
Yeah, I, I-
And we might need like another department of people to actually enforce it and program it and-
Yeah, I, I mean, after reading on the grant, I was like, this is great, awesome. Why are we not doing it? But it makes sense.
That's a good question to the several grant companies who work for us.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Kirkland?
Yeah, certainly. So, um, I, uh, spent quite a bit of time reading the, the legal background behind this, uh, because it's relatively recently passed by, uh, Congress. And there is a, something like 50 to 60 municipalities throughout the United States based upon their size that are allowed to apply, and Austin is like 26th on that list. Uh, and then the communities that are around them are required to go and kind of join that other municipality. And this is for, uh, a grant that is guaranteed. So each one of these groups that chooses to file is automatically given the million dollars, and that million dollars is for planning purposes. And then after that planning is completed, then each of the individual municipalities, uh, including Bastrop, can then write grants, if you put it in the plan, for access to the $5 billion, uh, that they've set aside for greenhouse gas, uh, reduction initiatives. Um, so I, I guess my question is, in terms of Bastrop participating in this, in order for Bastrop to be able to request something later, we have to make sure it's something that's in the plan that's relevant to us. Um, and so how, how do we participate, other than signing the letter?
So it's, um, the, most of that will occur through CAPCOG,
Okay.
the Council of Governments, and I serve on the executive committee and on the Clean Air, um, Board. And, uh, so that's why we have some, um, there are some monitors that are located in Bastrop, and that helps with, um, making sure that the readings are accurate and, um, ha, there are some people that are like, well, don't read it because we don't want to know, well, you, you do want to know what it is, you want to know when it's good, you want to know when it's changing, and so that would, that's the clearest example I can give you of, actually, they will place the stations in our, within our jurisdiction.
Um, it seems that this one is oriented at, um, things like, uh, the electric e-cabs, um, like maybe, uh, if we lack infrastructure to allow citizens to get a credit on their electric bill for having solar energy, that we could put in for a purchase of that infrastructure as the city, so that that could benefit the citizens in that way. There, there's a number of things that would fit into what's intended with this. Um, and, yeah, it-
We don't have a specific ask in this particular grant with the city of Austin. We're relying on CAPCOG, but no, we don't have a specific ask.
Okay.
And, and CAPCOG is, um, generally going to be, to your point of the regional area, they're gonna, the ask is gonna be for everything, so that it's like a smorgasbord, and then if, and you pick up the stuff that you, that you actually want, is generally how they approach it.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Partially, but, yeah.
Um, Councilmember Crouch?
No, I didn't have a question.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Council, we're on the top of page four. We are on item 9B, consider action to approve resolution 2023-15 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the city of Bastrop Public Library Collection Development Policy, which is attached as Exhibit A, providing for a bi-annual review and establishing an effective date. Ms. Pearson?
Good evening. Hello, everyone. Oh, I forgot, have to do this, so y'all can all hear me. Um, okay, so I am bringing this policy to you a second time after a little bit more review. As previously stated, this- As previously stated, this policy has not been reviewed since August 11th of 2015. And this new document has been edited and revised for readability. It includes digital content, consortium membership, tech share and interlibrary loan program participation. It's also been revised and updated concerning purchase requests from patrons, gifts, donations, and the reconsideration of materials. We also combined a couple of things together so that we have all of our collection materials under one policy. All right. Are there any questions about the policy?
Councilmember Lee?
No questions, but I do want to thank the library board. I've sat in multiple meetings and they have gone over it, gone over it, answered questions from residents and from councilmembers to try to make sure that we do have a good updated policy. And I'm just very impressed at the work that you guys do. There's a lot of conversation that goes on in those meetings and it's really good conversation. So they are bringing to you guys a very well thought out policy.
Is that a motion, Councilmember Lee?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
A second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We're on 9C, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance 2023-08 of the city, city of Bastrop, Texas, amending ordinance number 2022-22 fee schedule of the city of Bastrop to amend Appendix A Fee Schedule, A 14.01.001 of the Code of Ordinances to amend the cost of variance for subdivision variance review, zoning review, zoning board of adjustment review fee from $3,681 to $500. Sign variance fee from $1,056 to $500. Flood plane variance from 150 to 1,000, as attached in exhibit A and providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer and severability, establishing an effective date and move to include on the April 24th consent agenda for second reading. It wouldn't be the 11th because that's today, so.
Correct.
The 24th.
It is the second reading. Thank you, Mayor.
There we go.
This was presented at the prior council meeting. You sent me back to make sure I didn't leave any variances on the table. We did bring back the sign variance and also the floodplain variance. You'll notice that the floodplain variance has an increase. That's meant to have an increase. It seems strange to me that the one that would have the most detrimental effect on the town would be the cheapest and the other ones would be more expensive. So we really need to invert that. Any variance that's related to floodplain requires a substantial amount of information and study from the staff and it really is not one that we need to be taking lightly. So that one, yes, that one should have a requisite increase. The sign variance is a reduction from 1,056 to $500. We anticipate bringing in the budget after we do a cost of service review, perhaps some additional amendments to these fees, just depending on understanding how much time it actually takes, so.
And see, manager, as you do some process improvements and as we make additional revisions to the sign ordinance, there may be some people that would need a variance now that won't need a variance. And so it won't matter what the fee is because they won't need a variance. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, the items that are before you later on tonight take up a good portion of the variances that are requested by staff or staff has to review.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, just love to see, love the direction you're going with this. It's all about property rights and this goes a long way toward helping with that and some of the other items we're going to talk about later as too. So if, well, I'll wait until Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, Councilmember Lee, your light's on. Was that for this one? Okay.
I didn't turn it off, but I do have.
Okay. Councilmember Lee?
Forgive us back there. So I have some questions kind of for educational purposes because not everyone may know what a subdivision variance fee is or a zoning variance fee. So if you don't mind giving a brief explanation of what each of these mean and if possible, maybe an example for the public of when they might need to apply for one of these variances.
Sure. So a subdivision is a fancy name for a plat. You'll hear us talk about a plat. Somebody submitted a plat. We had plats received XYZ. The platting requirements are spelled out in the code. So if there is a requirement, let's say for a driveway to have 25 feet, but the parcel, and this is where we like create our own, we create our own drama, for lack of a better term, our code, we have no minimum lot size requirements. And so in the normal sequence of development, you zone something, because zoning is ethereal, it follows the property. You zone something and that zoning dictates how big or what the plats or the official subdivision should be. We don't have minimum lot sizes per se, and so our plats are often dictated by other things like a driveway width, line locations, easements, those kinds of things, encroachments. So one might need a subdivision variance if you had three acres and you're subdividing a couple of those acres and one of the driveways is going to not fit exactly within the spacing. So there is a fee for that. There's a fee for us to look through that and perhaps bring that to any one of the bodies who would review that. That's that one. Zoning review is kind of funny because we don't really have zoning anymore. We have place types, but that's still included. And so as we go through the code and we perhaps bring back some zoning descriptors, if there is an amendment to a zone that requires a specific setback, for example, in the old residential, you needed to have a particular setback in a particular lot coverage. If you can't do that or there's something regarding a use that's not really spelled out in the code, how do we get through that process? And then board of adjustment is, that one's super critical. That one goes to court. That's quasi judicial and that is also if there is, you built your house into the, what we used to call side yard setback and now it's open space and you encroached inches sometimes because the builder, you know, didn't take the form survey correctly or the surveyor was wrong, which happens. Sometimes those are inches, sometimes those are feet, and how do we take you through that process? Oftentimes, the owner doesn't even know until they're selling it or somebody's, you know, they're transferring property and they go, you know, you encroached on the neighbor's fence or your fence is over this many inches. Sign variance fee, that specifically of the sign, I'm hopeful that we're going to get to a point in the code that we have specific parameters for administrative review. And that's normally about 10%. So if you're short 10 parking spaces and you were, or you required 100 parking spaces but you're short nine, we can administratively approve that. The sign variance fee, same sort of thing. The sign is supposed to be a certain size. How can we work through the code without requiring super, super costly or expensive items? And then the floodplain variance, that one's expensive because we do have maps that we are supposed to follow with the county maps, the city maps, FEMA maps. So anytime somebody is submitting for a floodplain variance, they are asking for us to amend where water is essentially going to flow or what they're impacting. They're normally going to do that because they're going to bring fill in, they're going to elevate, they're going to do something, but we always have to consider the downstream impacts because you don't want to flood your neighbors. It's actually illegal for you to flood your neighbor. So how we work through that ends up having super ramifications later on. That's why that one's a little bit more expensive.
Thank you. So I thought that we had talked about in our last meeting, the $500 still may be unobtainable for some residents, depending on, you know, the project and just income. But I didn't notice any, anything about that mentioned in the packet. Where are we on that?
I did not, and the reason for that is because I really don't have a cost of service. I don't know how much it costs me right now, other than I know we touch things way too many times. And so if I were to cost it out today, it's going to be very expensive. And I'll give you the example staff and I discussed today when we're doing plan review. Everybody has a particular software they like to use. Our software doesn't necessarily work well, so FIRE has a copy of the software and Andres is over there shaking his head up and down. FIRE has the software, building has the software, our third parties have the software, Fabiola's borrowing somebody's software. We're all doing it differently and then we're all uploading. Viviana then has to turn around and go, oh, this is kind of the same one, the same one, sort of the same one, maybe this is the third one. So we're, we're not being efficient using one software review so that we all see our stuff. Too many hands are touching it. So if I were to cost that out today, review, it would be astronomically expensive. So I want to, I want to smooth it out before I come back with, yeah, it's not really 500 bucks, we can get through with that in X amount. Some of the things that you're going to see later on today will drive that cost down additionally because we'll only see it for a minuscule amount of time versus what we're doing today.
Or it won't be a variance at all. And so then they're not paying 500 or anything.
And is that for, is an administrative review, what is the cost for an administrative, or is there a cost for administrative review?
So some of this covers that administrative sec, that administrative cost. What is proposed today, no, there wouldn't be a cost because staff is able to make that decision immediately based on the parameters that we're giving. Some of this was like sign administrative review, even though it was happening internally, we were still charging.
Yeah. I just, I do, and I totally get what you're saying, it takes time to go through that. I was reading, I think it was Austin that just passed, can't remember when it was passed, but Austin passed something for low-income families for, they like 10 variances a year and you had to apply for it. And of course, you had to meet certain qualifications and the fee was reduced to like 350-ish or something like that. Maybe we could implement something like that and figure out how maybe that would work in Bastrop or something similar to it. I just think that $500 might still be a kind of a pinch for some people in the community if they're just wanting to get a small project done.
So I still have the ability to waive some fees. So I will, I will take a look at the merits of the case. For example, we had a driveway issue today and it was sort of, we created it, they created it, we're going to take equal, let's get it through the system and let's process it. And I would not have charged any kind of variance fee for that because we both bore equal. The, the one that it gets hard is when somebody is intentionally creating that variance. Those are, those are hard for me to say, yeah, no, because there's alternatives for you to meet that, but your house design maybe just doesn't match the lot or something like that. But I'm happy.
Completely agree, yeah. I completely, some of it is kind of, we're creating the chaos, so gotta pay. So I totally, totally get that, definitely agree. The other, the other is what we're going to talk about, I think, in some of the other agenda items, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
And counsel, I'd like you to also keep in mind on zoning review, if that comes back. And actually, even with our place types, if somebody's wanting to change the place type, they're generally, there are some folks that are wanting to do that because that increases the value of the property and they're wanting to sell it and have the zoning done. And when you do that, you have to send out public notices, so there's cost associated. So for me, that would be an instance of if you're improving the value of your house, then you're wanting that done, so you reap that benefit. The other taxpayer shouldn't have to be subsidizing that act. So it's, the devil's always in, in the details and that's why it's so important that, that we have, make revisions to the code as necessary and that we, the 10% administrative review and the city manager have an authority helps instead of trying to come up with rules that try to take into account every possible scenario. Because that, that can make your head explode.
We can't codify everything that walk, I mean, this is, sections of this town are very old and it, you, you just, you can't codify everything, you just can't. So we've got to kind of take it as it comes and depending on what's trying to be done in the area.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. So counsel, just so we're clear and part of this is, so it's clear for me, this says first reading, but really it's second reading. So it's not going on the consent agenda because this is the second reading, so this is, this is one and done?
Well, it is, but there was changes from the last first reading. That's why it is an item for action as opposed to consent.
Right. But, but the point is, it's listed as first reading of the ordinance and it's not the first reading.
Correct. It's the second reading.
And so this will be done because Mr. Borquist has pointed out more than once that we have to read it twice and hear it twice, but it doesn't have to be an exact on the second one. And in fact, that's part of why we read it for the second time to see if there's any corrections we need to make, correct, Mr. Borquist?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
So counsel, just so we're all clear, this is ordinance 2023-08 and this will be the last time you see it. And if we approve it, I'll be signing it tomorrow. You clear on what you're voting on?
This is the second reading.
Second reading.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Everyone clear what you're voting on? Any questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We are moving on to item 9D, which is, I think, the same situation, except this one says second reading, but we'll be putting it on the April 11th. I'm not going to read that last part. 9D, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-07 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Building Block Code, Chapter 6, Section 6.3.009, Private Frontage, Subsections C, D, and F, and providing for findings of fact, repealer severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Ms. Creo?
So this is also the second reading. This related to the amount of glass in the commercial segment, a very large amount of glass that also was in conflict with our International Energy Code. The construction standards board heard it and made recommendations. What was missing in your last agenda item was letter C and striking out the term clear glass. Very hard to meet energy requirements without a very thick piece of clear glass. So this item is a carryover with that additional clear glass struck out.
Counsel, any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Lee?
I just have one. I have a few questions tonight. What was, what is the IBCs? The packet stated that we were in conflict. What is the IB, what are we in conflict, in conflict with?
So the International Building Code does not have this glazing requirement. This is a function of the pattern book and this is a function of B3. The city has adopted also the International Energy Conservation Code. It is very hard to meet the energy rating of a building with that much glass. Possible, expensive.
So it's an unintended consequence of, with the glazing requirement, it's the idea of if you're walking along, that if there's some breakup and some glass here and there as opposed to long alley, back of a, three buildings together with never a window, that's a different feel. So, but to the point of, from a power standpoint, from just everything about energy efficiency, she's trying to clean it up and match the building code.
Counsel?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. This again, this also is a second reading and final for ordinance 2023-07. Everybody clear what you're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. Counsel, the next three items, 9E, F, and G, as promised in the packet that was sent out, the resolutions have been placed for you on the table, so I'll just make you aware of that. That's in the stack of papers that you have. On 9E, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-10 of the council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending Article 2.4, Administration, Section 2.4.001, non-conforming uses and structures by adding that the intent of the provision will not create a disparate impact to residents. Ms. Creo?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This one was super important, one, because the intent of the code is not to be discriminatory, but it does have a disparate impact among residences who are our most established. So it was important for us to just begin to point out, not just from a, this is the will of the people, but from a, I can't imagine that the city would want to do that. And as we make amendments and as we work through the code, we need to be cognizant of the impact to the residents.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. I have a question, and I don't know if I should ask them on this item or the next item, but it's regarding nonconforming. So I was thinking back when I was reading this about the, when Lakeway Hospital came to, then I was on PNC. One of the, um, concerns that they had was, um, I can't remember the specifics, but I believe they were wanting to build out, and they were seeking funding, and because the, they were considered nonconforming, it was impacting their ability to get funding. So, uh, kind of, when I was reading this, that came to mind. I don't know if, again, it fits in this agenda item or the next agenda item, and what can be done to work through, as you say, that. So we can talk about it on the next one. Okay, thank you.
Council on 9E?
Motion to approve.
All right. I'm gonna give that to Councilmember Lee and give a second to Councilmember Kirkland. Would that be a second over there?
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, motion passes unanimously. We're going on to 9F, again, you have the ordinance, um, at your place. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-11 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending Article 2.4, Administration, Section 2.4.001, nonconforming uses and structure, continuing lawful use of property in existence of structures, item 4, nonconforming use or structure may be expanded, reoccupied with another nonconforming use, or increased as of the effective date of this code unless authorized by the ZBA by adding an administrative relief component for residents. Ms. Creo?
So this is, this is to your point, Councilmember Lee. Nonconforming is, it's a standard practice. What happens when you change a code and you're trying to get to a certain point in time? Um, usually reserved for those areas in the ETJ that we were going to annex, we would call them grandfathered. And the hope was, as we annexed them in and they became part of the city, we weren't annexing quote-unquote junk, or we weren't annexing unsafe structures that hadn't met any kind of code requirement. When you go through a massive code change, like Bastrop did, a great deal of your city became nonconforming. There is no way through the, the description that you just stated, because our new code has a different standard. And so there is nothing to describe that but nonconforming. One of the items for particular discussion as we move forward and, uh, as we think through the B3, is where is it really applicable? And, um, it is my belief that other cities, when they adopt a form-based code, they adopt a form-based code in, in smaller sections of town that are manageable, that the impact, once it's adopted, isn't that great. You are gonna transition, and you are gonna still have the look and feel of your, for us, a historic downtown area. You're still gonna have that look and feel, and so the jump into that code isn't that bad. You'll have some porches, you'll have some encroachments, you'll have some things like that. But the other things in the code that I'm presenting will help you through that. With the sweeping change that we did here, there is no way through for that commercial example that you gave. So, an option for moving forward is where do we apply the B3 as a city? Is it a smaller footprint, and we revert back to some semblance of the 2019 and remove nonconforming? Those are big dialogues to have, and I'm, I'm cognizant of the rodeos, I'm cognizant of all of that. I just, again, do not believe that this city would have voted the way it did if you truly understood what the impact was going to be. Not just from, um, not just from the business on Chestnut that perhaps isn't allowed anymore, because it has a smell, it has, you know, you can hear it now, something like that. Not just from that component, but just from the overall. When I brought this to planning and zoning, one of the commissioners said, well, I don't wanna apply it to businesses. And I said, well, are you sure? Because we've got some businesses down Main Street, and we've got some businesses down Chestnut, and in some of our historic areas who do let off a smell. They do let off noise, they do let off other things that they wouldn't be applied, that would, they would not be able to do something in that. Expand the business footprint, add the porch, add those other things. Are you sure you want to do that? The hairstyle salon, for example, up the road, Hair Sport, if something like that were to happen, they've got parking in the front, they don't have access off of the side, they're gonna have to come off a side street. If hairs, um, the hair salon wants to expand or do something different, there is a different set of rules to meet under, so.
Councilmember Lee, one thing on, um, that particular project, um, the devil's in the details. There were some easements that weren't abandoned, and, um, that, that owner had called me and was saying they were looking for a, a, a letter regarding the nonconforming. And I said, well, write the letter that you want, and we'll use that to start going through, and just write that you were conforming before, and now it's adopted, and that's why you're not conforming. And the person told me, but I didn't conform when, when it was originally built. So I can't write a letter that said I ever conformed. So, uh, when, when you get into project by project, the devil, the devil is certainly in the details, but...
Yeah, and, and nonconforming only applies to legal uses and structures. I had a, I had an, uh, an instance in Aransas Pass where we annexed a portion of the town into the city limits, and your grandfathered, everything you were doing there can keep happening, except this was a junkyard that had never been permitted by TCQ, so he couldn't continue his junkyard use. There were other things he needed to, to jump through, so.
It's just not that easy. Councilmember Kirkland?
Uh, yes. Um, Ms. City Manager, what percentage of buildings in Bastrop are nonconforming today?
So I said in a windshield survey of driving the town, probably 75 to 85% of the town is nonconforming.
And what are the things that tend to drive that or cause that to be?
It could be a driveway, it could be parking in the first layer, um, it could be the absence of a sidewalk if they're needing to increase.
A continuous driveway that's a block long?
Mm-hmm, the continuous driveway, um, the porch size, um, the where the house is situated on the lot, um, coverage. That pretty much, uh, and building type as well. Um, we have, mobile and modular are allowed in the code, but it's very difficult to get them onto properties today. So we have a lot of those on the north end of town that, um, a lot of the properties on the north end of town have parking in the first layer. And so this, this item really was, if we're trying to keep authentic Bastrop, and we're trying to keep the footprint of what we have, and we're, and we like the kitchen, and we like the eclectic, and we like the differences, then that neighborhood should retain its character. You should be able to drop a pin, and if everything around you looks the same, you should be able to move forward with the same. I used the example of Corpus Christi, we had, um, both in Corpus Christi and Aransas Pass, actually. Um, Aransas Pass was formed on a land lottery, I'll tell you that funny story at some point later on, but there is a lot of 25 by 100-foot lots in smaller segments of town. That's how land was situated. If you were affluent, you could buy two lots, three lots, four lots, and have larger lots. That's how farm areas develop. You can have a McMansion, you can have a small, the smaller quarters. The B3 code intended that to happen. What, what it didn't intend to do, as we went through the nonconforming, is things that are there that look similar aren't gonna be allowed through the redevelopment process. So is it fair, um, if a house meets the regulations on this side of Pecan, but doesn't meet it on that side of Pine or that side of Fayette? And that's where the disparate impact statement comes forward.
So, um, Council, I have been looking at this, and I started with the conversation with Sylvia that said, is 200 feet big enough? Uh, is, you know, she kind of said, well, how big do you wanna make it? You know, those kinds of questions, and I said, well, I don't know, but it, it feels like I, I don't wanna say no to that, but rather look for other things. So I went and looked for other things. And I have been working on these other things and kind of language for some other topics that, uh, I've shared with Sylvia, and Alan has, has helped, uh, I don't know, author what, what that might look like based on some ideas. Um, but to Ms. Foster's point, we don't have it in a packet, you don't have it in front of you to see it. So I'm not gonna propose that we pass that today. Um, but at the same time, um, I, I'd like to tell you what they are, and, um, and then maybe we could put it on the next packet or something like that. We could discuss what to do with that. But, uh, the, the first one is that, uh, and, and for the, the types of things that drive something to be nonconforming, you may have, say, uh, the KB Home neighborhood in, uh, North Bastrop, where someone literally moved in in the last few months, because that's when that house was finished. Um, and they wanna put a back porch on their home. Well, because they have parking in the front of their home, they're not allowed to, uh, put that back porch on the house without, uh, going to the Board of Adjustments to, to get a, uh, uh, some variance on that.
You're, is, is that factual, Ms. Creo? Because I know, they, their driveway, I, I understand that a lot of people, um, and I will blame men, get, make the garage where cars aren't parked in the garage, but I don't, does drive, uh, does a driveway count as parking?
So, uh, a driveway is considered off-street parking. So, um, it, what I discussed with Councilmember Kirkland is if, if the property's under a development agreement, that's sort of one set of rules, and we've gotta run parallel to that. Today, you've gotta deal with impervious cover, coverage on the lot, um, parking on-street or off-street. So, um, I'm not sure if the back porch would encroach or what that particular development agreement said, but...
Well, and, um, sometimes in those neighborhoods, there's homeowners associations that have rules about...
Yeah, different rules, I agree.
You know, you can't have a roof over it, and you can't impact your neighbor and that kind of thing, so, okay.
And, and so what I kind of came up with for this specific area is that, um, people should be able to modify their nonconforming structure as long as that modification does not make worse the thing that is not conforming. So, for instance, if the issue was that there was parking in the first layer, so therefore the structure is nonconforming, so you can't do something else on the property, you would be able to do the other thing on the property, um, and the fact that you have parking in the first layer doesn't prevent that.
So the problem with that is, um, pu, pouring a patio, a small patio, maybe is not the big deal, but if you're going to, um, make a pickleball court in the backyard, and you've increased enough impervious cover that you're now flooding your neighbors, that's, that's a difference.
I completely agree, and I'm not suggesting that you would do it in violation of the code. Like, you couldn't introduce a new thing that would be in violation of the code. I'm just suggesting that, that as long as you're not...
The parking doesn't keep you from being able to do it.
Yeah, as long as you're not making the thing that makes you a, a nonconforming structure worse...
You've made it past the first hurdle.
Then you've made it past the first hurdle. Like, you still have to go get a building permit, you still have to meet code, you know, all of those things.
I, I, I think where he's coming from is, the way the code reads in its strict interpretation is if you're nonconforming, you're not allowed to expand to a certain percentage. The building code says if you're under 50%, 49.999, you should be okay. Its interpretation on the other side of the aisle into planning and nonconformity is a little bit stricter.
So maybe it's a guy, maybe the middle of the road is guidance in the interpretation, and it, you know, um, if you're saying a strict interpretation would cut it off, maybe, and if that's not, wasn't the intention, there may be more than one way to fix it. But I totally understand what you're saying, is a, a way through, you've made it past the first hurdle, we keep going.
Yeah, and so then there's a, a couple of others. One is to allow, explicitly allow, routine repairs and nonstructural alternation, alterations, uh, if not extending or enlarging the characteristics that render it nonconforming. Um, because maybe it's implied that you should be able to fix your house, but it doesn't say that in the nonconforming, uh, section of the code.
So I'm gonna give you an example of right now what I'm facing with a particular person. Um, they have a house that has a, um, carport. Uh, and, uh, he has a disabled mother and a disabled brother. Uh, and the mother is now aged, and he has to bring them both into his home. He wants to convert that, uh, covered patio, that covered carport, into a two-bedroom, one-bath for the family. It's encroaching, it's parking in the first layer. I mean, there's like ta-ta, 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 but if you drop a pin, everybody in the area has enclosed their garage. That's the point. You, you would not, under today's, you would not be able to do that.
And so to your point of, you're not increasing impervious cover, if you're not encroaching more, if you're not impacting sight distance and, and ability for, you know, right?
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
And I tried to pull the 50% wool, you know, the rabbit out of the hat, and go, okay, well, it's less than 50%, so he should be allowed to do it, but construction costs are very expensive. And, and so the alternate is, we try to keep our valuations low, right? We go protest, and we say, no, my house is only worth 180,000. But then the improvements that he wants to do are 120,000. Then we go, nah, yep, you're, you're well over your 50% rule, sorry, you can't do it, because we don't like parking in the front layer.
And, uh, two more. Uh, one is the, um, if a nonconforming structure is damaged by an unavoidable casualty, it may be replaced or repaired if the necessary permits are sought and repairs commenced within two years of the damage. Uh, and then the last one was that the act of real estate acquisition of the subject property or nearby property by a government agency should not render a user building nonconforming. So that means that if, uh, you have some condemnation by the government because they need to expand a road and they've, you know, taken a piece of property, that might move a property line closer and make you nonconforming, but this would state that, that that specific thing wouldn't, wouldn't cause you to be nonconforming, if it wasn't your fault. So those were the four things that I researched and kind of came up with that might, um, kind of lessen the impact of the 75% of homes in Bastrop that are nonconforming structures today.
I'm, I'm happy for, to get, um, Alan to weigh in on some of the verbiage. I think that's, some of the devil's in the detail, and we'll talk three-part of that. But like, one of the things right off the bat is, how do we, and who's gonna keep track of the day of the damage to know when two years has passed? Because that damage may have been the hose on the back of my washing machine. You know, that, that damage is not necessarily Hurricane Harvey coming through. So, the, you know, um, I, I, uh, Brian Witten, if you're watching, I'm thinking of you. Um, when you come up with rules like that, the very first thing is, how do you keep track of that? How do you enforce that? So when I hear within two years, I immediately think of what? And, and how do we know what that date is? So, um, and what's magic about two years?
The things I read said six months.
Six months, yeah, our, our current rule is six months.
And I, so I thought, well, goodness, that seems short, let's make it one year, and then Sylvia suggested two. So it was kind of, that's where we landed.
Okay.
And from, and from that perspective, it's, my parents died without a will? I gotta work through the deed, I gotta work through all of that. How do I get through those hurdles without me, by the time that gets resolved? Where am I and how can I resolve it? Um, but we haven't seen all that cleanup that y'all had, so...
Yeah.
So I, I have a... Is there a, um, are, are you wanting to not approve the first reading with an opportunity to review it? Because here's what I'm thinking as a possibility, is if we approved the first reading to get the ball rolling, and it is April 11th, and PNC meets at the end of April, what if PNC vetted some of the wording suggestions? And then when we come back for the second reading, we could come back, um, not on April 24th, but at the first meeting in May, and have, have had some time to get some public input, let PNC vet it, hear from, um, the city attorney and the city manager, and just have, uh, as... You know, maybe that's not any different than not doing anything tonight, but just to kind of put the stake in the ground and get something moving, is, is something like that agreeable?
Yes, all, that would all be agreeable. But, I mean, is there any other thoughts or ideas or discussion on? I mean, this, you know, I, I looked into it, I came up with some ideas, I went and talked to citizens, I talked to Carrie Foster about it, and, uh, and just was soliciting for ideas for, hey, how, what can we do? How can we do it? What are some of the ways to kind of cure this thing? And those were the ones I came up with.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, we're saying we're going to, um, approve this on the first reading, we're gonna take it to PNC on the 27th, and then bring it back at the May 11th? Is that, am I, is my date right?
That's a timeline that, in my opinion, allows, allows, um, some vetting by the folks that...
May 9.
Yeah, and that also gives, um, community members a time in April and a time in May where they can come, make public comment, and we can splash some social media out and that kind of thing. But I have two other, Councilmember Kirkland, was, were you done?
Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Plunkett?
No, I just wanted to say, I think you're going about it the right way.
No, I just wanted to say, I think you're going about it the right way, because we're taking known problems, and we're writing rules to solve those problems so that they don't affect the next person. And, I mean, it's a bit of a whack-a-mole method, but at least we know we're dealing with real issues that are affecting real people, and, you know, if we keep doing this, we'll have a lot less to do, and we'll fix it. So, no, I think this is a good way to go about doing it.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. It is feeling a little whack-a-mole-ish. So, that was, you're done? Councilmember Crouch?
I agree with both of the councilmen on that, and I think the hardest thing with all of it is defining authentic Bastrop. I've heard Sylvia ask that in several development meetings, what is authentic Bastrop? And nobody can really say what it is or what part of town it is, because it's all kind of jumbled. And we've got Camps Swift Army Barracks, we've got brand-new homes, the KB Home Development, we've got single-story homes, we've got two-story homes, wood homes, stone homes, brick homes, cement siding, and log cabins. So, how do you define what authentic Bastrop is? It's kind of, it's kind of all of that. And I don't, I think it's a good pass at the 200-foot. I don't know if it needs to be bigger. I think it's something definitely we need to, I think it's a good idea to vote on it tonight, come back with some different terminology. I like Councilman Kirkland's, all of his ideas that he had in there, and I think P&amp;Z, if they looked at it, they could give us some alternative items, too. But it's going to be almost impossible to define everything that's in Bastrop, because there's so much. There, it really is, and that's what makes Bastrop Bastrop. So...
200 feet is, just for reference, it's about three houses in either direction, two houses back, two houses forward. So, it's really encompassing what that block is. If we did it...
Well, depending on which part of town you're in, because there are some parts of town that 200 feet means you get to approve yourself.
Just your neighbor. Yes, your neighbor.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So, that, and that may well be what it needs to be, is it's one or, you know, if that's the intention, then maybe that's the way it needs to be written. But I think those are the kind of ideas that planning and zoning would be good at vetting. Was that it, Councilmember Crouch?
Yeah, and you're right, 200 feet, if I'm standing in my backyard, 200 feet, I can touch five houses. If I'm standing 20 feet on the other side of my front yard, I'd just touch one house. So, it's just, you know, that's just part of Bastrop, that's just how we are. So, yes, that's all for me.
I guess my point is that we shouldn't be, sometimes when you try to fix whack-a-mole, you create another problem. And it's unfair that someone now has to conform with four houses away, but if you live in the right part of town, you just have to conform with yourself and one neighbor. That's equally inappropriate. That's all, there's two sides of every coin. I just want us to make sure that we've...
That's a good point.
You guys have taught me, and I've learned from Mr. Borquez, it's really not a good idea to make the sausage in front of everyone, and I just want us to sit back, because there's, there was a lot of thought that went into what was written down, and there's been some unintended consequences. And I don't want to whack-a-mole it and make worse unintended consequences, because we didn't take time to, you know, to your point of read it, think about it, kind of play devil's advocate with it. Councilmember Lee, Mr. Borquez, did you want to say something?
Certainly, Mayor. Council, I just wanted to chime in and say that I support the process you've outlined and the reasons for doing so. As to the 200-foot rule that was proposed, I am okay with that, and the reason is, I don't think it's arbitrary. The 200-foot rule is very similar to that, that's already in the zoning statute for providing notice, so it's a commonly-used boundary. In the end, after getting feedback, that may not be the one you choose, but I think it's acceptable if we go that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Borquez. I also have to mention that during these nearly six years, we've also gotten criticized that that 200 feet's not enough for zoning. So, if it's not enough for zoning, then maybe it's not, so, again, no good deed goes unpunished. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor.
Nope.
Thank you. So, I kind of feel like a workshop is needed, and I say that because I think that there's a lot of good questions that Councilmember Kirkland has brought up. I was okay with the 200, but I need workshop on that. Thank you for explaining that. So, I feel like anyone watching won't really know what that means. Does that mean I can put a driveway in without coming to the city, or do I still have to come to the city? I think, and then, I think you said 70, 75% of the homes are considered nonconforming. Those 75% of those people are gonna, we don't want people to go for a free-for-all and say, oh, well, I'm okay now, I'm outside of the grid, so I can go ahead and put a shed in the backyard, and I don't have to come to the city. I kind of think that we need to know, and the community needs to know, what that means you can do without having to come to the city, and what that means you can't. And then, maybe we discuss where that, what language needs to be put in there to present or to prevent the free-for-all, but make sure residents know when they do need to come to the city to apply for, you know, changes to their home, or get a variance, or get things of those natures, and we kind of define what that is. Because I'll be honest with you, I don't think most people probably know that they need to come to the city to do half of what they do to their property. I probably don't. So, maybe, I think a workshop would be great to kind of iron out the details of what some of Councilmember Kirkland is presenting, and then we kind of maybe decide on the 250%.
So, P&amp;Z asked for something similar. If somebody was expanding a driveway, or doing a repair, or doing something like that, they still need to get their normal city permits. What this essentially says is, we're not going to stop it at the door, because today we stop it at the door and say, nope, you're nonconforming, you can't do that based on these parameters. But I do agree that perhaps a joint workshop, or something similar like that at Planning Commission, because there's about four or five more items of low-hanging fruit that tend to just be the rock in the shoe of staff, like, man, this really makes sense, except if we can't do it, like, let's just move it on. So, if we can at least get the next couple of P&amp;Z meetings in a workshop to talk about what those things feel like, and what the unintended consequence of the code was for that, I think we will have come an astronomically long way, as, you know, we're also working through the Iredelle District and the Commercial District Code, so. I agree, we can, we had one planned for Planning Commission this month already to talk through the codes, because the Planning Commissioners felt the same way. They said, yeah, we went, we heard, we saw, now that it's in action, didn't really understand that, but one of the Commissioners especially was, is there anybody left on staff who can explain how we got here? Well, Trey's still here, so, and the mayor's still here. So, yes, we can explain how we got here, and now explaining what is the best path, what is the best path forward. To still meet the intent, because I go back to the PowerPoint, there was a will of Bastrop to preserve its unique character. If that was the will, then how do we execute that without being super restrictive to people being able to do the simple things on their property?
So, Council, the beauty of tonight is that it's completely up to you. We've talked about a whole lot of changes, and maybe the thing to do is to just put it on hold and let P&amp;Z, and get a workshop scheduled, and come back with a first reading, or we can approve a first reading and make substantial changes. Councilmember Kirkland?
So, I really want to accomplish something in this space at the same time. I don't think we have to do it, like, today.
I agree completely.
And so, I would motion that we table this pending additional discussion, but that's not to kill it, that's to bring it back with agreement.
Okay. And so, I assume that would be a motion to table until the next appropriate meeting, so we're not saying like it's automatically the next one, because we've got workshops and stuff.
Appropriate meeting is, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland to table to the next appropriate meeting.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. So, City Manager, do you think you've got enough to know how to keep going? Because to your point, Councilmember Kirkland, it's not that we're not wanting to do anything, we're wanting to do things decently and in order. Council, are you clear on what you're voting on? Ms. Creo, did you have something?
No, I'll have to break it to stop tomorrow, just kidding.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland, and a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Good discussion, good work ahead. We want to be doing the right things. Council, we're on the bottom of Page 4, Item 9G, Consider Action to Approve the First Reading of Ordinance Number 2023-12 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Amending Chapter 1, Section, Article 1.3, Plating Procedures, Section 1.3.006, Lots of Record of the City of Bastrop, B-3 Development Code by Adding a Section for Existing Lots of Record Who Can Receive Administrative Approval Outside of the Normal Plating Procedure. Boy, I hope we're able to do this tonight.
This one, and this one should be, should be an easy one. We have a lot of lots in town who were subdivided by meets and bounds. It was a larger lot, a parent left a child, et cetera, et cetera. The lots have street, the lots have water, the lots have sewer, they're...
An address.
Yes, an address. They're developable lots, but they still have a description that is the east side of Lot 10 and the north 50 feet, et cetera, et cetera, which describes it as an unplatted lot. The way our code reads, and the application of our code reads, is that any time you're extending infrastructure, well, that is verbiage from the local government code. The whole point of plating is for orderly development, so that we do not create colonias, and those are areas that are underserved by water, drainage, sewer, et cetera. The state adopted model subdivision codes to help us prevent that. The primary purpose of plating is orderly development. And so, when we're going through the process in our code, we have taken the stance that even setting a water meter is an extension of infrastructure. And so, we are requiring a plat. The plat is, it's a costly, it's a costly process, it's not a simple process either. Some of these perhaps administrative plats, but nonetheless, it is a plat. And as I've told you before, a plat is when we are able to exact things. I need additional right-of-way, I need X, Y, Z, and we're supposed to take it with an exacto knife, but cities have a tendency to use a serrated knife, and we take just big hunks and chunks of things we may or may not need, depending on a transportation plan or some other master plan that could be amended later on. So, the intent of this one is really to allow our lots that are already in the city, who have an address, who have all the appropriate infrastructure, to match the local government code that says, yeah, they should be able to develop without the crazy hoops.
Council, one thing I'll share with you, because this was one of the unintended consequences where people were suddenly, what do you mean, I have an illegal lot? I've lived here for 20 years, and they're saying I have an illegal lot. And at one point, the city was going to put money together, and we were going to do the surveying and actually do the plats and kind of clean them all up at once, and then, I don't know, COVID and a few other, Harvey and a few other things happened where that wasn't intended. This has always been one that was intended of, again, it's another one of those first hurdle, well, you can't do anything because you have an illegal lot. You didn't, you weren't platted since, it's 1980, isn't it?
And, yes, and you cannot have a building permit if you're not platted. That's the way the statute reads, again, because of orderly development rules. So, for somebody who was given a lot, or sold a lot, and they thought, because it says 1311 Chestnut, and they thought, well, it's got an address, it's a lot, and then they come to find out, not a platted lot, so guess what? You can't build that house, you can't build that structure until you come through the plating process.
The other thing that, to keep in mind, is that the county, on a very regular basis, continues to allow things to be divided by meets and bounds and not require plating. And that can be happening in areas that then are purchased and come back with a development agreement, which would fix some of the plating, but not always. So, it's a problem that's not going to go away.
No, but these are existing lots of record. This is not, I went to the county and I subdivided it by meets and bounds, because down at the county, it's a ministerial act. They take what you give them and they record it. They're not check and signature, they're not doing any of that. So, meets and bounds is a quote-unquote "legal" way to divide property, it's the raw way to divide property.
It's just not a plat.
Yes, you still have to go through the legal plat if you're trying to go vertical with anything else. So, this is only for existing lots of record, things that are already here that are, for whatever reason, still subdivided by meets and bounds.
So, people didn't wake up in the same house they've lived in forever and find out they're on an illegal lot? Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, this is just, you know, one of those things that I've always thought was one of the most unjust parts of this code, and I'm happy, happy to move for the approval.
I have a motion to approve Ordinance 2023-12 from Councilmember Plunkett, and a second, was that Kirkland or Kirkland? Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. We're on our last two items for individual consideration, Items 9A, 9I, and 9J. So, the community knows, well, I'm, I'll read nine, well, I'm going to talk about it first. The Bastrop Economic Development Corporation has seven positions on the board, and we are currently at four positions and three vacancies. That means if anybody is sick, we can't make a quorum, if anybody's traveling, and things happen, especially since we're heading towards the summer. With very much aware of the fact that I am a lame-duck mayor, I was initially really shying away from adding, making any appointments and adding anything. However, we do need to function. And I had, at the request of the city manager, who I think most everyone knows is acting as the interim executive director, and one of the main things we're trying to do is to get council and the EDC board in sync, working together, and implementing a policy that was unanimously approved in February of 2022. It seemed appropriate that if we were going to appoint anybody, so that we can continue to have meetings and move forward, that it was better to, for it to be council members than it was to introduce somebody, a new person who doesn't have the history, wasn't around when the policy was written, knowing full well that after the completion of the mayoral contest, whether there's a runoff or not, in the near future, there will be a new mayor who will immediately be starting the July fair, the August interviews, the September appointments. Really, I know that there were, I was the person who said we shouldn't have a preponderance of people on the EDC, but we also need to be able to do business. And we've got some important decisions ahead of us, particularly, interestingly enough tonight, since we approved the master transportation plan, particularly roads and transportation. And those don't happen overnight, and there is no, I would hate for them to be stalled because we can't make a quorum. Big, long lecture, Item 9I, Consider Action to Approve Resolution R. 2023-56 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, confirming the appointment by the mayor of Councilmember Cheryl Lee to place four of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Councilmember Plunkett?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Kirkland. Mr. Borquez, they're both going to ask you if they should recuse themselves. I think if you can't vote for yourself, you shouldn't be in office, and I made the appointment, but will you give them direction on whether or not they should abstain or recuse themselves?
I don't know of any legal prohibition for doing so. Whether they choose to do so or not, I think is up to them.
Totally, personal opinion, I have confidence in you, or I wouldn't have appointed you. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. We're moving on to Item 9J, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R. 2023-55 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Confirming Appointment by the Mayor of Councilmember John Kirkland to Place Three of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation as Required in Section 3.08 of the City's Charter and Establishing an Effective Date.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. We're going to be going into executive session on the following two items. Item 10A, City Council shall convene and disclose session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.074, to seek the advice of legal counsel and discuss potential acquisition of real estate relating to the Simsboro Aquifer Water Treatment Plant, Well-Filled and Transmission Facilities... Well-Filled and Transmission Facilities Project. Item 10B, City Council shall convene and disclose executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.074, to seek the advice of legal counsel and discuss potential acquisition of real estate relating to Correx, a utility provider adjacent to the city's CCN boundary. It is 8:55 and we are in executive session. You good? It is 9:30 and we are out of executive session. There will be no action taken as a result of executive session. We're on item number 12, adjournment. Councilmember Kirkland?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. From Councilmember Kirkland and a second from Councilmember Crouch. It is 9:30 and we are adjourned.